All right, it is 6:30. And Councilmember Jackson has joined us, so we are at a full dais. And I am calling the -- this meeting of September 30th, a special workshop, calling the City Council to order. Madam Chair, you've got to turn on the mic and talk really close.
I'm also calling the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. We have a call.
Alrighty, it is 6:30, and what a big day for all of us. This is an exciting time to -- for the city of Bastrop as we move into the future. I'm going to read the work session item, and then we'll talk about what the process is going to be real quickly. We are going to Item 2A, Discuss Bastrop Building Block Code, Bastrop Building Block Technical Manual, Pattern Book, Thoroughfare Master Plan, and Receive Planning and Zoning Commission's Code Recommendations. I think we have a presentation tonight from staff. I believe Mr. Jones is going to be making that presentation. I have one person signed up to speak. If you're in the audience and you're wishing to speak on this item, please get your information turned in. They will do at 6:30. I'll give you a few minutes, because we do want to hear from everyone, but please turn it in to the City Secretary. And so what we will do is have presentation from staff, and we'll ask -- council will ask staff if they have any questions. We'll kind of clarify things with planning and zoning, and then we'll have citizens' comments, and then we'll have the remainder of our workshop. So that's kind of the order that things will flow in. Is that agreeable to you, Madam Chair? With that, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, Chair, Commissioners, Councilmembers. So I just want to reiterate what the Mayor said and just recognize kind of what this moment is tonight. It's a culmination of an extensive amount of work, of effort, of energy, of time, of resources, a little bit of blood, sweat, and tears maybe in there. But this -- what tonight signifies is the passing of the baton, if you will, from Planning and Zoning Commission to City Council in making recommendations for the B-3 code, the transportation plan, and the pattern book. It's been a journey. We've had a great deal of public input to this point. We've had design rodeos, code rodeos, transportation rodeos, drainage rodeos. We've had pop-up events. We've had engagement with builders' associations, different community events. So it's just really been an extensive amount of effort and time and everything that has gone into getting us to this point. So I just wanted to recognize that, kind of where we are today and the significance of that to key off of what the Mayor was saying. But with that, what we'll do tonight is we'll go over a few of the topics that were -- was covered at the Planning and Zoning Commission at the last meeting, and then we'll take a look at the recommendations from the P&amp;Z Commission from their meeting, and then of course we'll have any open discussion at that point.
Mr. Jones, will this be in Dropbox for council to have access to?
Yes.
Is it already there, and I don't know it?
It is not there. We'll make it available to council and P&amp;Z as well.
All right, thank you. I didn't know if I was looking in the wrong spot. Thank you.
So again, just an overview of what we'll talk about tonight. We'll get into some detail about the Iredale District. We'll talk specifically about the L-CRA property. That was a point of conversation, I think, out in the community as well as a P&amp;Z Commission meeting. We'll talk about the zoning on Main Street. We will also cover a rural street section. I know that was a section in the codes that was not in there unintentionally, so we will show you what that'll look like tonight. And then, of course, the planning and zoning recommendations. I'll go ahead and say there were two recommendations. One was they -- so they made a recommendation to forward them to, as written, with two recommendations. One of those, staff had made a recommendation after the public input meetings that we had up here at City Hall. There was a lot of community discussion about the upzoning of Main Street, recognizing that and hearing them. Staff made a recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission that that go back to a like-to-like translation, just like everywhere else in the town. Now, and I'll get to them, but there are some specific properties, like Tracy's, some apartments, and others that will still be P-4 with a like-to-like translation, but we'll get to those. And they made a recommendation to go with that staff recommendation. And then there was also an opportunity, staff made a one-sheet form, if you will, for individual property owners to be able to request a different zoning at this time if they wished. And we presented those to P&amp;Z, and P&amp;Z's recommendation is that no individual request will be considered at this time, and it'll just go like-to-like. And I'll get into the nuances of that in a little bit when we see those slides. So the Iredale District. So this area was established in 1920. The city hired a gentleman with the last name of Iredale to come do a survey of the town, and he actually laid the town out, or the city rather, out at that time in a farm block and building blocks. And that was the creation of the Iredale map. And so it's historically significant, and we were actually able to research in the minute books and pull the City Council minutes from that meeting where the town actually did that, and we still have those in the vault of where the town decided to hire that gentleman. So it's definitely historical in nature, and it was also used to kind of inform the gridded network system, if you will, for the master transportation plan update. So when we got into the codes and we discovered that to be fiscally sustainable, geographically sensitive, you need to be walkable, the gridded street network is actually more fiscally sustainable, we were able to look back in that and kind of incorporate that farm and building block gridded network system into the master transportation update. So why was that recommended for the Iredale District? So the legislation, House Bill 2439, that we're all now familiar with, that says that cities no longer have the ability to regulate building materials, no matter your climate, whether you're on the coast, whether you're susceptible to flooding, to fires, hurricanes, other natural disasters, they've just now said, any building material allowed in the current code or up to three past codes is okay, no matter the climate or the geography of where you are. So it was important, because it does give a couple of options to enforce building materials, and one of those is if you're in a historical district. So this was an addition in the latter part of the code as a direct result of the legislation, and it's meant to keep neighborhood integrity together, so the character of the downtown area, and also to help protect property values. So given, if we cannot regulate building materials, then anybody next door to anyone, a historical home, a national landmark, et cetera, could come in and build a house out of any building material that's allowed under the code. And really, the adoption of this Iredale District will just allow us to continue to do with these codes what we've been doing in the past with building material regulations. And it'll tie back to the pattern book, and the pattern book talks about building materials, and that will be the only mandatory thing in the pattern book when it comes to the building materials in the Iredale District. And I'll kind of clarify, I have a slide in here that talks about Certificate of Appropriateness. I think there were some questions about that, and so we'll get to that here in a minute.
Mr. Jones, is y'all intention to include it in Chapter 9 of the code once it's approved?
He's going to get to the change.
I didn't know, because I couldn't find it, and I knew that we were chicken and egg sort of thing.
Sure. Yes. So this is the Iredale map we've overlaid. We've overlaid in red and then added the major streets there. You can see where State Highway 95 comes in, where Chestnut Street is, and then where State Highway 71 is. So this is actually the original Iredale map, the date is 1920 for the historical reference. This is the area of that map today with the existing street network system and how it looks today in relation to today's map. And so again, in the Iredale District, it is Chapter 9 of your code. And so there would be a -- two districts in the city. There would be the existing one, where we're not recommending any changes to, it'll continue as is, but then the Iredale District will be an overlay that will allow us to regulate building materials only. So, and there, I'll get to it in a second, and I'll just go ahead and get to it right now. So Iredale District, Certificate of Appropriateness. So we tried to break it down into as simple steps as possible. So if you are a historic landmark, a national historic landmark, then you will need to submit a Certificate of Appropriateness. It'll go through the Historic Landmark Commission, and then upon approval, you'll submit your building permits and have your permit reviewed, same as we do today. If you are not a national historic landmark, then you will submit your building permits. The Planning Department will review it for materials within the pattern book, and then it can be issued at an administrative level. I will say, for that to happen, there will be -- need to be two changes to the code. They occur, I believe, on Pages 203 and 209 in your books, but we simply need to change within the Certificate of Appropriateness. We need to change and update the wording to say within a national historic district and not just a historic district. And so with that simple change, we can follow this very simple process in following what we've always done in the current overlay district, and then for the Iredale District, if you are not a national historic landmark, then that's something that staff can approve when we take a look at building materials. Any questions on that?
I'm looking at Councilmember Ennis. Are you? Councilmember Ennis, I need you to turn on the mic. Nobody can hear you.
So the district existing is the Bastrop Commercial District, which is a national registered district.
Right.
So if you're within that district or a national landmark, then you would follow the process?
Under yes.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
And if not, you're just within the district itself, you would just submit building plan review, staff would review it for the materials in the pattern book, and if they match the materials in the pattern book, then it can be approved.
This doesn't negate the fact that one of our landmarks, does it? If we're calling out national historic landmarks, are we also including our landmarks?
The local?
That was my question.
I would just say if it's a registered historic landmark...
So that you cover local land, nationals, is that your intent, Councilmember Ennis?
Local, or state, or national historic landmark.
So any registered historic landmark or within a national historic district?
Bingo.
Would that ... Okay.
Can I say something? On the district, the reason why that's important is for contributing character of the adjacent buildings. And so we're concerned about not just if they have that landmark, but if they're in the district, they have a contributing character to the neighborhood, and that's why we want to review that.
Yes, sir.
So from a timing, when does the HLC meet again?
They'd be scheduled to meet in October.
I would...
What'd you say?
In October.
Yes.
Personally, and council can speak up for themselves, but we'll be having the first, if things go according to plan, we will be having the first reading on October 8, and the second reading two weeks after that. It would, what we've just discussed, it would be great if HLC would vet through that and bless that, and council would know that HLC's okay with that wording, because for me personally, I know Councilmember Ennis is real familiar with the HLC ordinance, but that's why we have them as a commission, and I would really like for them to bless that.
Can we move, can we move that meeting?
Yeah, we can certainly, yeah.
So we've got it before council considers it finally.
We can get with Commissioners.
Right. So bottom line, what you're telling us is this is not going to be onerous on folks who have not currently been covered by the historic landmark ordinance now.
That's correct.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so the next item is the LCR, L-CRA property at 1405 Willow Street. There was a lot of discussion out there regarding this one. We had some people come and talk at the Planning and Zoning Commission, so we just wanted to provide some additional information tonight in terms of uses and everything that goes along with that property. So the current zoning of that property is neighborhood tourism, and the proposed zoning would be place type 4 or the mixed place type. So this wording is straight out of the Form-based code on the neighborhood tourism description, so it says it shall be compatible with the adjoining neighborhood fabric while still allowing for an enclave of tourism, resort-related, residential, and lodging uses within residential building types. So that, within the residential building types, is exactly a like-to-like translation for the P-4. So you can have P-4 uses so long as they're in residential building types, so that's why you see the like-to-like translation for the P-4. It allows for both attached and detached single-family residential types with the reins of residential office, lodging, and resort support uses. So again, that's directly from the Form-based code, and then we wanted to cover some of the actual permitted uses and CUP uses within the district. So retail establishments with incidental sales, no onsite food preparation or alcohol sales are allowed by RIT. Retail sales or services with no drive-through facilities are allowed by CUP. And then food services such as restaurants, cafeterias, et cetera, are also allowed in that district by CUP. Again, by RIT you can have art, antique, museum, furniture, or galleries, retail repair, fabrication, and it does exclude auto-related uses or electronic sales or services by RIT. And then again with the CUP, you can have different theaters, cinema, or music venues. And then also again by CUP, you can have fitness, recreational sports, gyms, athletic clubs, dance and/or yoga studios. Institutionally uses by RIT, it can be a park, green plaza, square, playground, and then by a conditional use permit, you have schools, libraries, community and civic facilities, and religious institutions. The residential side, you can have single-family residential accessory buildings, including garage apartments and/or what we would call an accessory dwelling unit, multi-unit homes, so duplexes, townhomes, quadruplex. You can have single-family residential attached dwelling units, and then home occupations, again, all by RIT in that district, and then you can also have manufactured housing by conditional use permit. Other uses allowed by RIT, you can have utilities and utility services, so different electrical and different utility providers by RIT. And then by conditional use permit, you can have breweries, distilleries, wineries, hotels with 45 rooms or fewer, and then bed and breakfasts with five or fewer rooms owned or managed. So those would be the allowed uses by RIT and neighborhood tourism. And one of the things that we wanted to mention, and there was some confusion about it, is staying neighborhood tourism. Well, neighborhood tourism, as we know, will not exist in the new code, so place types are what we will translate those to, and the P-4, because of the definition from the Form-based code, translated most like the neighborhood tourism, and that's why it got the like-to-like designation of the P-4. So again, in P-4, the translation, you could have different retailer commercial type uses so long as they're in house form residential, which goes back to kind of the definition of the Form-based code.
Mr. Jones, Councilmember Jackson would like to ask a question.
Right. Since we won't have the neighborhood tourism classification anymore, and you're saying that P-4 comes the closest to it, I can kind of understand that, but it seems like it's a little bit more expansive than just neighborhood commercial, and so it has a few more uses that wouldn't necessarily be neighborhood tourism. So I'm, that's just something I'm, I guess it's not really a question, but is that accurate, the fact that it is a little bit more expansive?
Well, I wouldn't say it's more expansive, because there's no uses. We don't have use charge in the new code, and so there's no additional or additional uses or less uses. We just allow things that don't create a nuisance, that are not a hindrance to your neighbors. We allow those types of things to operate so long as they can operate in a house form.
So it's a little bit more open opportunities for development in that particular zoning, or not zoning, but classification?
It's certainly more flexible than the current code, but I think it was intended to be that way. By nature, the new B-3 codes are supposed to be more flexible. It does a lot of things. It allows a walkable neighborhood. It allows communities to be built. I think when this whole journey started, one of the things that people said they wanted was a Tracy's Grocery, to be able to exist. Well, our current codes don't allow that today, and the P-4 is a zoning classification that would allow that to take place. So I think intentionally, they're left flexible when it comes to that, so long as we don't create nuisances.
Councilmember Jackson, I think the other thing that you have to appreciate about this particular piece of property is because it is in field, marketing-specific commercial businesses will be a real challenge. So it's going to, because we've been meeting with L-CRA, and part of the challenge is what is likely to go there, that you can then sign and advertise in a residential district. Well, you're limited by that. So what will go in this particular area will have to go in house form, and we'll have to appreciate the environment with which it finds itself. So it's not like it's going to be on 71 and have commercial with 71 feet signs. It's not going to happen in P-4. So whatever commercial goes in P-4 in this area will have to be in a house type, and will have to have appropriate signage to fit the neighborhood. So that in and of itself is going to reduce some of the uses, not because P-4 reduces it, but by the very fact of where it's located will do that for itself.
Right, I just, just the example of Tracy's, I mean, which is pretty much, I think, grandfathered because of, it was there before the zoning and all that even got into effect. And so I just didn't, I mean, it's a comparison that was made, but I don't see it as being a realistic one, since that's a grand, I think it's a grandfather situation, because before zoning and all of that, we had that situation.
So is that a statement, or are you asking for clarification?
It's a statement.
Because there are things on Main Street that, and he'll get to that, that will remain P-4 because of the nature of what they are. So when we get to the Main Street conversation, there's three or four uses, there's a florist on Main Street, there's some apartments on Main Street, and there's some other things that will remain P-4 just by virtue of the fact that they're there, but...
But City Manager of those examples, and Tracy's being one of them, Tracy's lot is not zoned single-family 7.
No, it isn't, and it is going to be P-4 in this code.
It's going like-for-like zoning.
That's right.
Like the houses that are, if they're single-family 7, single-family 9, they're going to P-3.
That's right.
So one of the things that I think is important is, I think it's a little bit distracting to have a use conversation about this particular piece of property, because the entire codes, we said as a council and planning zoning has discussed, to get away from uses, because we said, you'll chase uses forever. Like breweries are really popular right now. Well, they may or may not be popular in five years. Who'd ever heard of vaping? And it looks like vaping may not be going on. So if you chase uses, you never get there. So we talked about the look, and one of the things I think is important to note is the only way that the L-CRA property would have been a like-for-like for P-3 is if it had been zoned currently today for single-family. That would be like-to-like. So even though it's adjacent to single-family, it's, they've not had the same zoning, so when we've done the like-for-like transition, they are equally not having the same zoning. Planning Commissioner Connel is dying to talk to us.
Just before we move on, because I didn't want to steal Matt's thunder. So the other important aspect I think of this, and I won't speak for legal, but one of the things they brought up is that we don't, we only have, we have five classifications for this particular property. If it goes to a P-3, we are removing uses, which is illegal for the city to do.
Call it taking.
Right. So P-4 is the closest thing to get to it, and we can't go P-3 and a half. It's P-4 or P-5, it's got to be one of the two, and P-4 is the most appropriate. So for the folks in the area that wanted it to be a P-3, there's just not a mechanism to do that without going through and rewriting all of this to, you know, make something special for one single property, so.
Could I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Just regarding Councilman Jackson's comment, because it's a concern that I have, just because of the neighbors, you know, everyone's input, and I understand that. So, and what Ms. Humble said, a P-4, and this is just, I want clarification, a P-4 in another area which requires 20% of different housing types, we're saying this is a special consideration of a P-4 on the L-CRA?
No. His issue was, I think, if I understood it correctly, was some of the uses that are allowed in P-4. Tracy's is a P-4, but I think we can all agree that Tracy's works because it is at a major intersection at the corner of Cedar and Main. So things that would go in P-4 at Cedar and Main are not likely to go at the L-CRA property because they're not at a major intersection. You can't sign for it, and it's hard to get to. So what I was attempting to have was a conversation about the beauty of P-4 is it's market-driven. And when you are in field like L-CRA, there are some issue, there are some challenges that the market will react to that are environmental, that won't necessarily be P-4 at a major intersection with the traffic count that Cedar and Main Street has. So the market will dictate what goes there, and a lot of things that the community's concerned about won't go there, because the market won't support it, because it doesn't have the traffic, it doesn't have the signage ability and all of that. So when you look at P-4, you have to consider the environmental context, which is the beauty of this code, is the market drives it, and the market can't become something when you don't have all of the elements. So not every property is like-for-like. So P-4 for L-CRA will be what it needs to be considering the neighborhood, just like P-4 around the courthouse will be what it needs to be, because it's the courthouse.
So when she said like-for-like, she means P-4 in one part of town may or may not look like P-4 in another part of town. They will all be house form, and they will all fit within the requirements and the definition of P-4, but the, it's, again, it's weird to be having a use conversation, but the uses that someone would expect will be driven by the market. So for example, the property's on the market, it's been on the market for quite a while, they're wanting a little more than $4 or $5 for it. So once you invest that money in the property, you're going to have to run the numbers and have to build something where you, where it's still a good deal. So the very, and we haven't even talked about floodplain, access, it's a challenging piece of property regardless of what it's zoned, but by being P-4, you are required to have house form, but then you have to meet all of the other requirements as well. And the, on Page 18 of the code, you can see that from an impervious cover, it's a 10% difference, with, and that's after you take out the floodplain. So it's, it's not like, oh, well, if it was P-3, it would only be one house, and if you're making it P-4, it's going to be 900 houses. They've still got to meet the other requirements of P-4, and I'm not sure that got thoroughly vetted in the discussion. Councilwoman Ennis?
The Commissioner brought up an interesting point, and I, you know, I'm still learning all of this myself. Is it not a requirement that a certain amount of that property would have to be residential?
Not within P-4. There are recommended percentages within the code for breakdowns of place type within a pedestrian shed, but it does not require a certain amount of P-4 to be residential.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So, and this is maybe a yes or no, but I'm trying to figure out how to appease everyone. And am I thinking, so when we did our nuisance, when we had our nuisance discussion, we talked about what things we would consider to be a nuisance in certain areas, and what we didn't want there, and what we didn't want there, because this piece of property is complex. In nature, could we do something like that with this piece of property as, because certain things can't be built there, and I thought about that since our last meeting too, and you guys are confirming what I was already thinking. So is, because of that scenario, can we put restrictions on what can be built there?
The restrictions for that piece of property are the same restrictions on any other piece of property. Every piece of property, every property owner has to conform to the nuisance ordinance. If you can't, I can't be too loud if I live next to Lyle just because I happen to be P-3. So the idea is that you not be a nuisance to the other folks in the community, so I don't, I don't know how you would restrict one piece of property to a different set of nuisance laws.
Well, I'm not referring to nuisance, though. I just use that as an example. So as has been stated, some, some things just aren't going to be able to build there, be built there. Some businesses are not going to be able to come in and put a business there just because of the geographic location. So can we identify what those might be, and then already have those restrictions in place?
I don't, I'll let Matt jump in. I don't know how to do that, because that's contrary to the whole essence of the code. By definition of P-4, it has to be in house form. So I don't know how, you said there's some businesses that can't go there. They, a business that can't function in house form is by definition not allowed. So they have to be in house form, or it doesn't comply with P-4. And I also wanted to ask, and I know you're like, I have eight more slides, if you guys would just let me finish, but on Page 75, it talked about if it's more than 3 and 1/2 acres, will it most likely end up needing to have a neighborhood concept scheme by the very nature of the property? Because it's 10.2 acres.
It'll have to have a regulating... It'll have to have a regulating plan if they do something different than what's out there today.
And I didn't know what the difference was between a regulating plan and a neighborhood concept scheme, because I'm trying to get up to speed on the new term.
A regulating plan is, 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 is a more, um, a land planning tool. The zoning concept scheme is for change in place types.
Okay, so page 76 says all areas within the city of Bastrop, more than 3.4 acres, that do not require place-type zoning changes, which if this is zone P4 and somebody wants to build some P4, it wouldn't require that, will require a neighborhood regulating plan. Is that, are we talking about the same thing?
Yes, ma'am.
So, regulating plan is a neighborhood regulating plan?
That's right.
And so, um, that, by definition, it says, um, and I'm, and I'm, I'm checking, I'm ju, I'm not arguing, I'm checking, if it's a neighborhood regulating plan, is that essentially a site plan that planning and zoning is going to see? Or if it meets everything, it may not have to go to planning and zoning?
That's right. It's not, it's not as detailed as a site development plan. It'll lay out any, uh, proposed streets, it'll lay out the blocks, and it'll show, um, you'll have to have, I believe, a conceptual drainage plan with it. But it will not be as detailed as a site development plan. So, it...
But it's the first step towards a site plan?
Yes, it was saying if you're gonna...
A site plan is only needed if it's multifamily or commercial. If they are building, um, residential-type uses and it's residence, it won't require a site plan. But if these P4 are used for commercial applications, then it will get to a site plan, but if they plaid it and sell it off, then each individual use would require either a site plan because it's multifamily or, um, commercial, or if it is P3 and residential, then it would just be, um, something handled internally through a regulating plan.
So, since, I mean, there's no point in saying, well, just imagine if we're imagining LCRRA, i-if we imagine it as a P4 with the fact that it's 10.3 acres, it's most likely going, i-it, then it becomes, or is it a neighborhood plan? Is it platted separately? But a lot of those things will trigger stuff that will put it before planning and zoning.
Plating puts it before planning and zoning, and if they decide to do anything other but P4, so say they want, um, P4 and some P3, um, it, it may require some place-type zoning. Um, so there are a ton of asterisks, and we've gone through this gyration internally. So, a regulating plan, as long as it meets the words on this page, stops at the DRC. But the minute they wanna do anything different than the words in this book, it has to go to either planning and zoning or the city council.
And, and what threw me off about that is when you get into the pedestrian shed example, the pedestrian shed starts going to the percentage of this much P3, this much P4. So I'm, I'm kinda catching my tail on the backside. If it's all P4, can they be 100% P4?
So...
If they don't plaid it?
So it assumes it's already platted?
It assumes it's already platted, and a, a traditional pedestrian shed is about 80 acres, uh, so it's much larger.
Well, it's more than 30 and less than 80 is how it's defined.
Yeah, but I think if you take it strictly off the, the quarter mile, it's, I think it's 80 acres.
Okay, so what you're telling me is it's really, that 10.2 acres is too small to be a, for the pedestrian shed to be enforced?
It would be a portion of a pedestrian shed.
So, P4 if they, and if it's residential or commercial use in house form, it is possible that they could do it without having to do a regulating plan, if they just do everything P4?
Yes, if it didn't trigger a subdivision or anything else. Yeah. Now, the ped, pedestrian shed and the percentages would be applied if they want to do different than the P4. If they needed a place, uh, type change within the ped shed, then those percentages would be used.
Okay.
Okay, I, I didn't wanna slow us down in the process, it's just a, it's a very complicated situation to me at least, because of a lot of the things that have been happening with the planning and zoning, and of course with the council prior to my arrival, I'm still, I'm still accustomed to some of the other planning issues, and I'm trying to put it under, wrap, wrap it under my knowledge and understand what's going on with it. So, um, I apologize for slowing down the process, but, um, I'm beginning to get a little bit better handle on it, and I thanks, thank you for that.
Mayor, let me, let me answer your question, um, a different way. The, the property is how big?
I think it's 10.29 acres.
So if one developer buys the property and keeps it whole, and builds nothing but P4, and is the sole property owner of that, then it would be a regulating plan. But if they wanted to do anything different, they wanted to take that 10-acre tract and divide it into two 5-acre tracts, or something like that, there would be other mechanisms that could potentially trigger other things that then cause it to go before...
Plating.
That's right, before P&amp;Z or council. And so it's very difficult when you have a challenging piece of property, and that is, between the floodplain and the one-way in and one-way out and all of that, that, um, if, if they were to dedicate any kind of right-of-way, well, that has to go to P&amp;Z to accept. So, anything like that, if they do anything other than what's out there, P&amp;Z or council is likely to have to see it.
That's where I was going, because I don't think that really got, a-and the good part about that is at that point, now you got a buyer, now you got a plan, you know what they're trying to do, and then you can have it. Because right now, we're having a little bit of a conversation of anything I can possibly imagine, plus what you can imagine, and, and because, to Councilmember Jackson's point, this is a huge change, and folks are used to thinking about uses, but a market-driven use, a high-traffic, lots of noise, that, that's not the spot you would put it. You're, you're gonna be talking to Dr. Lassen about chestnut and pecan, that's a place for, with a lot of traffic, you know, that, and Dr. Lassen says, bring your money.[1028.81][1028.81](laughing) But, but that was your point of, even if, e, when a lot is, um, zoned as P4, there are other factors that go into what the market is gonna be able to accept on that property. Okay. All right, we, we, we really will let you finish, sort of.
The other thing we're gonna talk about is, um, the B3 place types and the so, the upzoning, um, I know that's not a technical legal term, but that's what we're gonna go with. Uh, so that's when you change the zoning to allow essentially a more intense use than what the property otherwise has today. Um, the intent behind the P4 was to allow different service options, uh, again, to provide different, uh, available, uh, local services within, uh, residential areas, uh, in, in, within the neighborhoods. Um, so we get to the, the individual place types, uh, and the requests, uh, from property owners, and as I mentioned, staff created a one-page form where, uh, property owners, if they wanted something different, uh, they could, um, we, we created a sheet to have a process to allow them to request that. Uh, since then and after visiting a little bit further with the legal team, um, and on their advice, um, in, in order to be open and transparent, um, on, on these requests where it would essentially be getting more intensive uses, um, our legal team has advised that it's probably best to hold off on those during this process, um, and process those at a later date, uh, that it would allow us to send out, uh, notification to property owners within the area, um, and just make sure that, um, in, in an effort to be transparent that, that we do that. Uh, so these are those individual property owner requests, uh, that would be getting an upzoning. Uh, so this is 701 Austin Street, uh, it's going from a P3, uh, to they've requested P4. Um, again, it's along Main Street. Uh, this would be the lot behind Tracy's, uh, and they're requesting to go from a P3 to a P4. And I'll mention that these, these maps and these exhibits have already been updated to reflect, uh, P3 going back to a like-to-like transition and a P4, um, along with the staff recommendation and the, the recommendation of, of the planning.
So that dark purple, just for everyone to get oriented, that's Tracy's 4, and everything else is P3?
Tracy's, I have another slide that gets into the, the exact details, but, uh, they were one, it's the same property owner, it's adjacent to there, uh, they were requesting the P4. Uh, this is a, um, out in, uh, at Puny Ridge, I believe, on Lower Lane, uh, it's proposed as P2 rule, and they were requesting it to go to P3 neighborhood. And then this is one that is actually, um, along 95, and the way the Form-based code was laid out right there, um, split this lot in two because it follows Gil's Branch.
I think your address is wrong on this slide.
Yes, my apologies.
Just, I saw anybody get confused about where we are.
My apologies. Um, and this is, has a split lot zoning, it's P3 neighborhood and P5 for, again, because it follows Gil's Branch, um, and did not snap to property lines, and so it does have a split zoning on the lot, and they were requesting to have all P5 since the entire property, uh, runs that corridor. Um, so again, the like-to-like on Main Street, uh, staff did recommend going back to those transitions, uh, so all properties, um, with staff and P&amp;Z's recommendation would be to, uh, go back to the zone using their direct zoning translation. And again, it was categorized to the nearest place type, uh, from the current zoning. Uh, examples would be if you were at SF7 today, single-family residential, you would be a P3, uh, neighborhood. If you're a multifamily, uh, multifamily 2, you would go to a P4 mix. So again, for clarity, uh, we went back and looked at Main Street and did a like-to-like zoning translation, and this is what that looks like. So if you move left to right on that slide, uh, at the very bottom, you'll see Farm Street, and then you'll move north up the first one, the Cedar, and then you'll start back at the next one at the bottom, uh, where Tracy's is, there you can see the purple, and then that's at Cedar Street, and then you would be moving north towards the top of the slide, uh, to Hawthorne Street. So, uh, this is from Farm Street, um, up to Hawthorne Street. You can see, um, the majority of that went back to P3. Uh, there is the civic space use with the church, and then, uh, Tracy's grocery, again, uh, went to state of P4, uh, based off their current zoning in the Form-Based Code. Uh, again, the same kind of, as you move on this slide, you start at Hawthorne Street, move north on Main, uh, you do have a park, you have, uh, the forest there, uh, they are actually a, a non-conforming use today, um, so if they get a like-to-like translation, um, they'll be a non-conforming use in the future. Um, there's, uh, some of the apartments, you have civic space of the church.
Wait, 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 wait. So the florist is currently zoned, single-family seven with a conditional use permit, or it's got nothing and they just happen to have a florist?
I don't believe it has a conditional, it's just a legal non-conforming use.
Legal non-conforming?
That's correct.
And you...
It predates the current zoning, it's been in existence, it's never gone out of use, uh, so they're allowed to continually operate, um, legally, although it does not conform to the current zoning.
So, since they are a legal non-conforming use, can we make them P4 so they become legal and conforming all at the same time? Or is that, again, I'm looking at council. Have y'all already had this conversation?
It would be, it would be changing it, uh, to it from a P3 to a P4.
So what are you guys recommending? P3?
If you go like-to-like zoning like the, the, um, planning and zoning commission is recommending, it would be P3. Um, and, uh, continue to use as a legal non-conforming use in the future. But if that use ceased to exist for six months or greater, I believe, uh, that would, it would lose their non-conforming status, and then you cannot have a P4 use on that property.
And Alan says, yep, that's what we gotta do, any P4s and up, upzone? Council? Gotta turn on the mic.
Okay, we're on now. Um, so if, if this was noticed for P4, then we can zone it to P4, um, even though the co, the, um, planning and zoning commission's recommendation is like-for-like. Uh, if it was not noticed for P4, if it was noticed for P3, then we have to remain, it has to remain that, and, um, if the florist shop wanted to have their zoning changed, um, to P4, they can certainly rec, uh, request that.
So the letter that went out was to go to P4, uh, because that's the use.
But, the recommendation from, from planning and zoning was to go like-to-like, and the issue that we bump into is that when things were upgraded, the surrounding property owners were not, um, they were not sent notices that that was going to be P4.
Everybody in the, in the city reserve, uh, received a, a letter, but they did not receive, the 200-foot did not receive a specific letter that said this would go to P4.
Okay, I understand.
But it was noticed for P4.
Okay.
But this slide recommend, or represents the like-to-like zoning along Main Street.
I got you, I got you. Councilmember Jackson?
So, I mean, your, uh, the, um, commission's recommendation is that it remained P3 and not, even though it's...
We didn't have, we didn't have this slide at P&amp;Z, I'll preface it with that, uh, but this slide would record, or would represent their recommendation of going like-to-like. I do not know, we did not have specific conversations about this property, uh, because we did not have that information at that meeting.
That's what I was gonna say, we, I assumed it was, um, commercial property. I think we all kinda thought it was commercial property because it was a florist.
Councilmember Ennis, could you ask something?
So there's, there's not a, really a downside for like-to-like on this property, uh, we can, uh, zone it P3 and they can be a legal non-conforming until they quit using it, and then it's addressed?
That's correct. If it...
I, I, personally, I'm, I like, I like, uh, P&amp;Z's recommendation.
Our biggest, the biggest concern was the fact that notice wasn't made, that, that if somebody was going to change, whether it's up or down, one way or the other, that you're gonna, you would normally have to provide notice to that 200 feet, but nobody got notice, we just sent, what, 4, 47,000, or 4,700 something?
It felt like 47,000, I assure you.
So, you know, even if, even a downgrade, the neighborhood doesn't get to come in and say, well, we don't want it, we'd rather to keep it, you know, like everybody else here. So, the like-for-like recommendation was just put it out, put out the new code, and then if anybody wants to change after the fact, go through the normal process like they would today, instead of adding this as a, you know, caveat, let's come in and spot change things as we go through it.
I, I appreciate that, and we, and I swear we're gonna let you finish. When you get done, I have a, um, I have an idea for some of these one-offs, but go ahead. Are you almost done, Matt?
Yeah, I'm almost done, and that's kinda what we'll be looking for tonight, is some direction, based off the discussions tonight, we'll need to notify property owners, um, of the direction you all wanna take with this. Uh, so getting to the rural street section, again, this was inadvertently left out, um, in the P2, uh, uh, place type, there was not a street classification, so again, this would be added, it's a rural street section, uh, for asphalt. Asphalt, um, I think this is one exam, or the only example I can think of, if I get to show an engineering slide and make the mayor's heart happy, uh, so I'm thankful to have the opportunity to do that, no, but it's, it's a crown, it's a ribbon curb, ma'am.
Is the ribbon curb mandatory?
That's what it shows in this, so if they did not want to do that, it would be a deviation from that.
It's square top and barded, is...
It is Austin Street. If, if you're looking for...
It's Lower Lane.
Yeah, i-except it has, um, ribbon curb so that the maintenance of the street is easier to maintain, and it keeps it from unraveling because it rains.
So, but it's just hot mix, right? It's two in, I, I can't see it.
Yes.
It's two over, what's the base? Base has gotta be subgrade, C-note is probably lab test, or is Trey? Okay, that's fine.
The subgrades are minimum requirements unless a geotechnical report can, or, uh, supports something different, as approved by a city engineer.
So, is the intent to have it in two lifts, is that what you're trying to do? Four, and then do the ribbon curb and do the two for the final? I, I just can't...
Ask that question again.
Is it intended to be two lifts of hot mix? I see two inches and four inches, but I can't, are they, they look like they're both hot mix. It, I'll talk to Trey, it's fine.
Um, you're not approving that tonight?
Yeah, I understand. But, but I was the one that was like, so P2 doesn't get to have a street?
Yes, and that's when we realized we had left it out.
Yep.
Hence why we're showing it tonight.
Yep.
There is a rural cross-section, um, and our goal is, is to make sure that, um, not only would we maintain it, but the county would as well. So whether it's built in town or in our ETJ, this would be the rural street section.
Matt? Real quick, is there gonna be an accommodating detail for, um, for a culvert?
Oh, yes, we have standard details for all that. Okay, with that last slide, that completes my presentation tonight. Uh, so again, we're here for discussion, uh, the P&amp;Z recommendations are presented to you, um, the code as written with the two recommendations of, uh, going like-to-like zoning, uh, without having individual property owner requests considered with this code adoption, and then, uh, P3, uh, along Main Street, except as otherwise, uh, in the like-to-like translation, um, as we detailed tonight. Uh, so that is P&amp;Z's recommendations to you all, um, and that concludes my presentation.
So, um, council, I have one thing I'd like you to consider, and it's work for planning and zoning, so I'm not gonna ask them unless y'all are interested in considering it. Um, I fully appreciated planning and zoning's discussion of, we, we've put a ton of work into these codes, we're rezoning everything, doing everything like-for-like seems very much between the books... the bookends. And then some folks have requested an, an up zoning and like the florist, for instance, we, they, they didn't make a request, but we know that they are a legal non-conforming and they were sent a P4?
Yes, they were sent a P4.
So they think they're going to be P4. So in, in my opinion, those, and there's, I saw less than six, five or six-ish? Less than 10?
Those were the up zoning, there were a couple others, so I think it's, it's less than 10.
Less than 10. I think we should consider either waiving their fees or substantially cutting their fees because we implied to them that it could possibly be done as a part of this process. So if they don't have to have the fees, I would like to send each one of those zoning instances to P&amp;Z so that the neighbors are notified and the property owner and the neighbors and Planning and Zoning would consider each one of those like they would have done if they had come through it. And that makes work for them, but I think that would help simplify if we discussed each item. Do you guys have any appetite for that?
Staff would encourage you to waive the fee.
I would suggest putting a time limit, like, okay, anybody that wants to do it, you can come to us within the next 30 days, whichever. And that way it's not an ongoing, the staff will know when there's a deadline and just...
Absolutely, I think that's a great idea. Councilmember Ennis?
So let me reiterate, you're talking about going with the like-for-like across the board and those special instances...
Have to go to P&amp;Z.
Have to go to P&amp;Z and their fees are waived.
And their fees are waived. And to, to Councilmember Rogers' point, not like, we're never ever collecting a zoning fee again, but if, if you, and I would say if you turn in your paperwork, whatever the deadline they were given for the original paperwork, if you've turned your paperwork in by, was it set, was there a deadline or no?
There wasn't a hard deadline. It was, we, we had a deadline to get it in front of P&amp;Z and then we of course have to get them in front of you, but a hard deadline for us internally would be helpful.
So I would say to you that October 22nd is a pretty hard deadline because that's when the codes are adopted. So if it's coming from this process, then October 22nd, that gives people that come before you that won't just speak that night. If they want something other than that, we can grab them that evening and we can put them back through the process, notify and all of that. But much beyond that, then it's not really affiliated with the code.
Exactly. And I think we should reach out to folks like, for instance, a florist that got a notice of a P4 that's going to be like-for-like. Cause ideally it would be awesome if we didn't have legal non, all exec strait, but we, we had some, the whole point of doing this is to have some consistency and, and some, so, hang on, Councilmember Jackson. So Councilmember Rogers, you, you're fine, you just don't want it to be extended forever and ever. Councilmember Ennis, you okay with that?
Same.
Councilmember Peterson, Mayor Pro Tim, Councilmember Jackson?
Right, I just wanted to, the October 22nd, is that gonna give enough time for notification and everything to you? Or is it just...
That's just making the request.
Or just making the request?
Just making the request. And then we'll turn around and notify everybody that we've got because we, we have a number of people that have already technically made that request because when they completed the one page, they signed it asking for it. So we're just looking for anybody else. So I would suggest 10/22. And if they don't make their presence known to staff or at that meeting, then they're not affiliated with the code update.
And for clarity, it doesn't mean that they can't request an upgraded zoning at another time.
They'll just pay for it.
They would just pay the fee and go through the normal process. So that makes some work for y'all, but I think that might clarify things. Madam Chair, what, what do you think of my idea?
Oh, we love work. We live for work. But I think that's something that, there's lots of changes, lots of new terminology, lots of going from one to another. So I don't think the commission would mind having these folks come before us to make sure they're clear on what's happening with, with the deadlines. Am I correct? I hear not, I hear not.
Commissioners, y'all, y'all okay with that? In the individual one-offs and do that separately from trying to get the whole code completed?
Yeah, I was just, I was initially concerned with the term "anyone who wants to do it." I mean, anyone can, but there has to be some cutoff time. I guess my question is, I didn't quite get why the October 22nd? When was, when's the first reading that council's gonna have?
First reading's October 8th and the second reading's October 22nd.
So wouldn't these changes have to be approved by both the first and second reading?
No, it, it wouldn't be the changes, it would be like the paperwork that they filled out?
Yeah, but if they wanted that paperwork to be, say, we were just going to allow kinda this zoning process to continue with the adoption of the code where you could make a request and have it included in the adoption of the code rather than coming in front of us? It's just have your fees waived, they still have to go through the process. Yeah, but what I'm saying is October 22nd seems really generous. Cause previously they would have had it in for the first reading and the second reading. So I'm saying is October 22nd seems like a lot of time to give people to figure it out when October 8th was it?
It's the first reading, yeah.
You know what? If you don't know, you gotta do it by then, that's the first reading. It would have to be in by then to be included in the final code if we weren't gonna change the system. I would say October 8th rather than October 22nd, but...
I'm, I'm actually okay with that as well. I like that idea. With the exception being, like folks like the florist, if they got a P4 and now they're gonna be P3 like-for-like, I would consider that have been a request.
They're just automatically included, cause that's...
Yes, and so they get notified, people around them get notified and that allows them to be, cause they would either, if their neighbors don't want them to be P4, then they would be P3 legal non-conforming because that's, that's the realities of the legislation. But if their neighbors are not opposed to it being P4 and if, if the Planning and Zoning Commission votes for it to be P4, they have an opportunity to be in compliance and their neighbors to have been properly notified of the request.
So October 8th actually works better because we have notice provisions and the November meeting of Planning and Zoning is moved up due to Thanksgiving. So this would allow us to notice and still get it at your second meeting in November and your first meeting in December, and we won't still be talking about zoning in January.
Yeah, good point. Okay, so Oc- October, cause the reality is we've already got some and we know the other specific cases and then we'll move on. Are you all right with that, Councilmember Ennis?
Yes, ma'am. The form that they filled out, I'm just reiterating again, the form they filled out is their request. So they don't need to come back and give you anything else, right?
No, we'll, we'll look through that.
They will be notified that their zoning case will be heard at the November P&amp;Z meeting.
Right, that's correct.
After their neighbors have been notified.
To be clear though, they won't have like a zoning concept scheme and all of that, those things prepared.
Correct. Which they will have to have in the future. This is like one-time grace. Is that, everybody okay? P&amp;Z, everybody okay with that? Yay! Okay. All right. So counsel or Planning and Zoning, any other questions for Mr. Jones? We have two folks signed up to speak. Any, any other questions about the presentation? Pablo?
I had one comment, well, it's been picked up yet. But I was mentioning before that currently on the, on the requirements and the checklist items, only a professional engineer is required for the site plan. And I wanted to open that up to other professionals, particularly planners and architects.
So mayor and counsel, that is a conversation that y'all will have to have. Staff put it in as engineers because drainage is your top priority and architects and planners cannot do drainage. And so it, it will require if a planner or architect's involved, that they hire two professionals because our stormwater drainage is going to require stamped plans by an engineer. And depending on what part of the building plans, there are some structural elements of the building plans that have to be stamped by an engineer as well. So just food for thought, not arguing one way or the other, but that's the reason for the engineer stamp.
Pablo's gonna say, yeah, but just let them do the drainage and we'll do the other part. I think that's what you're gonna say, go ahead.
Well, there's a lot of parts to this, regulating plan, there's examples of regulating plan, site planning. In my experience, that some of the, the early thought is a collaborative effort between engineers and architects and, and planners and landscape architects as well. And I think that's what we're really asking developers to do, to step up their game a little bit. And having worked with developers professionally, if they look at the list and they just see a professional engineer, I think they're gonna limit their team just to that. And I think what we're asking everybody to do is to raise the bar a little bit and look across the board. So I'm kind of indicating we should open it up. And certainly drainage plans are identified and we know as professionals that's specific to a particular discipline. But I'm talking about the site plan in general. That first meeting that we have with the DRC has to be a creative plan, in my opinion. And it's gotta be a, a collaborative effort among a, a team of professionals. So that's why I was bringing that up.
My only deal is the, the planner can't sign off on the drainage, period. And they couldn't do that anyway. So, and the drainage, there's a portion of the drainage that has to be done to be submitted in the packet, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So counsel, what are your thoughts on that?
If, if I may say something quick, please just kinda support what Pablo was saying. And I think that he's not suggesting that architects stamp drainage plans because they can, that all needs to be done properly, but we want some creativity going into our neighborhoods. And you get different mentalities that enter different disciplines. And certainly, certainly architects and engineers may look at a certain problem differently. And in order just to get more creativity, more perspective, it'd be nice if architects and other professionals could do those initial phases of getting a concept and idea going.
I, I think that's easy enough to update the, update the verbiage, counsel, if you're okay, with the caveat that, to your point, instead of maybe the engineer being the lead, that, that there's an engineer that's on the team that signs, that ultimately signs off on the drainage.
If y'all are good with that, then we will make sure that anything that requires an engineer stamp says that. But if that, if there's the ability to have a registered professional to do the rest of it, that's fine. So if that's your pleasure, we can find that.
Yeah, counsel, anybody opposed to that?
Cause we don't disagree with Pablo that a site regulating plan, there will be way more creativity from an architect than will likely happen from an engineer.
Man, they just, the zingers just keep coming. With my non-creativity, we shall move on.
Ma'am, you stand as the exception to all rules.
Oh, yeah, yeah, whatever, whatever. Any, any other questions or, or comments? And, and let's, Cynthia, we're gonna use that mic next to you, cause we're not really set up for public comment. Will that work? Instead of making them walk all around the room? So you'll come sit between Greg and, and Cynthia. And the first person I have signed up to speak is Carol Rice. And you, if you'll please state your name and address, and you technically have three minutes, but we won't be, there's no buzzer on your seat or anything, but you'd be...
Okay. No problem. I would like to indicate that letters have been submitted as well, which were submitted to P&amp;Z from both Mark Rose and myself and my husband. I have, I would like to begin by saying that the majority of the people in the neighborhoods, we li, oh, I'm sorry. I am Carol Rice. I live at 1406 Wilson Street. My backyard is exactly adjacent to the LCRA property, as are many others. I would like to make it clear that we are not opposed to the marketability plan that LCRA has. We are for progressive marketing of this property. We hope they get the full amount for this property. We'd like to help them do that. Our desire and the desire of the majority of neighbors with whom we have communicated over the last six days, since the reality of the consultant's recommendations to the P&amp;Z staff and commission, is to stand firmly in opposition to such a recommendation as P4 zoning for LCRA, especially without any requested input from those in the neighborhoods surrounding or directly impacted by such a dramatic change. Those same neighbors are at a total loss as to the rationale being expressed that for some reason in the massive rezoning effort, it was determined that notification of the zoning change for this property was not required to be given to the neighbors in the surrounding area. We were not notified and did not know until four to eight hours before the P&amp;Z meeting last Thursday. If not, then why was any notification of any zoning changes necessary as they are all massive and not individual projects regarding the 200-foot neighbor notification process? It makes no sense to us why this occurred. We would like to know who made that specific, specific decision and why. We do not believe P4 and for that also other area P zoning is not really all like-to-like. If you look in your brochures or in your V3 codes, I believe, if it's still the same one that came up like at 10:00 AM on Thursday morning, if you look at page 74 and 75, there's a picture of a P3 residential area. It's at the bottom of the page. And at the top of the next page is a picture of what could happen in a P4 zone. I do not consider those two pictures to be like-to-like. If you do, I, I'm sorry, I, I would really find that hard to imagine. It is not conducive to what the neighborhood has been like for history and it is not conducive for what is about to happen. We are also at a loss as to why the P&amp;Z commission would move forward with such vital zoning recommendation to the city council or why the city council would consider them when P4 zoning of this special property would leave all of us who have invested heavily in the restoration and maintenance of the surrounding historical properties that the council claims is one of its major priorities, to protect these vital historical properties for their significance to Bastrop and to its tourism. We support that goal. Leaving the future development of this property while rushing to zone it to P4 would leave all of us in the surrounding neighborhoods in limbo and would almost assuredly damage the marketability of our homes and most definitely have a drastically negative impact on the value of the properties you have always indicated you wish to protect. I would also like to state, there were several comments at the P&amp;Z meeting that by changing P, LCRA from P4 to P3, that it would bring about a liability for the city because it would be downgrading that property. That is not true at this point. They are still under neighborhood tourism, as I understand it currently. So changing them in any way, only if you change them to P4 and then we have a problem with that and try to downgrade that to something else, which is not our recommendation whatsoever. I believe there was only one person who testified at the P&amp;Z hearing, and that was Judy Hoover, that suggested going down to P3. Our recommendations, those of us of 40 or more neighbors who have been working on this for only six days, is that there be a very special zoning set aside for this property. We would like to work with the owners, we would like to work with P&amp;Z, we would like to work with the council. We would like to live harmoniously and we would like to protect this property. There are so many variations that have been discussed here tonight. There is already an easement that the city owns that is, that goes directly west of Buttonwood that now deadens into Wilson. I would assume that one of the most logical things would be for a street to go directly through that beautiful property there, cutting through all of that green area and taking the right-of-way and extending Buttonwood all the way down to Willow or weaving it around some way through the neighborhood, losing green space, habitat and everything else. We are very, very concerned about that and we think there is a rush to judgment on this piece of property. It is very unique, it is extraordinarily complex, and we feel that it has not been given the proper attention. And certainly the neighbors have had no indication, no recognition and no input into this process until last Thursday and no notification whatsoever. I've heard you talk about notifying the people now about if you go back to P3 on Tracy's and then P, they wanted to go to P4, everyone would have to be notified. My question again is why were we not notified of the zoning of P4 of LCRA? Leaving the future development of this property, I'm sorry, I've already read that. Finally, we urge the city council members and city leadership to put the brakes on with this special property that has meant so... with this special property that has meant so much to this area, um, and allow the neighbors to work with the owners, with LCRA, whom we have spoken to recently, in developing a specific zone that would ensure the mutual benefit and satisfaction of all parties. Realizing the city would like to complete this process, we would be amenable to a time limit within which these discussions could take place, and a special zoning designation for this magnificent property be brought before you for consideration. That's the major portion of my comments. Do I have time to ask a couple of questions that have arisen from the discussion here or not?
Let me go ahead and have the other person that wanted to speak as well.
Certainly.
Um, well, I'll tell you what, you're already sitting there. I spoke with the director of real estate for LCRA. They received their notice that they would be P4. They want, they own the property and they want P4. And their intention, they got their notice, just like everybody else got their notice. The reason that you were not notified was because it was never a residential zoning, so it was never going to go to P3. We, you were residential zoning, so you went to P3, and we didn't tell your neighbors that you were going to P3 because you also went from like-to-like zoning.
But you told all of the neighbors within that P3 zone that they were going to be rezoned.
No, no. Every, every property owner in town got a piece of paper that said what their property was going to be zoned.
That's right.
And LCRA got a piece of paper that said what their property was going to be zoned. They were treated exactly the same.
Beth, she's saying that the neighbors that were in, her neighbors, received notices about, um, their particular zoning, but not about LCRA.
That's correct. That, that's correct. And, um, nor did, uh, any of the other areas receive, everybody in town got a letter that said, "Everything in town is being rezoned," and your lot is going to be zoned this.
I understand that. I understood that, uh, our zoning specification was being changed to P3, and therefore, every, everyone within that 200 area of every one of those houses would have to be notified.
You've got nothing that said what was going on with it? No, ma'am. Your letter did not say what was going on 250 feet around you. Your letter said what your property was going to, and I.
No, and that's, I think that, I'm sorry, ma'am, I did not mean to interrupt you.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to make sure that we, I just want us to be on the same page. Everybody got the same letter, and nobody's letter said what anybody else's property was gonna be. The only letter you got was, "We are rezoning everybody in the city, and you own this piece of property," because that's why it took so long to put the letters out, because, so you got something that went to the property owner, and it had your property ID, and it told you what your zoning was going to be. So, and the only reason why I'm trying to clarify that is because there seems to be a misconception that other people were told what their neighbors were gonna be, but only the LCRA neighbors were not told. But, but everybody got the exact same letter. You were notified what the property that you owned was going to be zoned.
I think she was saying, though, excuse me for.
Go ahead. Can she answer me first?
Go ahead.
Do, do you agree that what you got was what your property was gonna be zoned?
Yes, I agree with that, as well as the Iridale overlay.
Yes, ma'am.
We got information about the Iridale overlay.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I think the confusion becomes that we have always been notified when changes of property that abut within 200 feet are going to receive a zone change.
But you were only notified if that was, if that was gonna be zoned, uh, an upgrade in zoning.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, you were talking.
You would be notified of, within 250 feet, if the zoning was an upgrade.
And you don't consider P4 an upgrade from, um, neighborhood tourism?
No, ma'am. And, and we've got legal counsel, I mean, that's not just like, gee, that's what we were thinking. We, we have legal counsel saying what, what's allowed in that property, what's allowed with neighborhood tourism, and in fact, the discussion that Commissioner Connell was talking about, if they had been zoned P3, we have legal counsel telling us that is a taking. And I also, in discussions with LCRA, they also believe that would be a taking.
Well, it would be a taking once they were zoned P4, if you downgraded them to P3, but where they are now, it is not a taking.
No, ma'am, they, it is LCRA's opinion, based on neighborhood tourism and how they have been marketing that property, that if they were zoned P3 and told that they could only have residential housing, council has said that it would be a taking, and LCRA believes it would be a taking.
And that's not what we're asking for, is that they be, that they be zoned P3. There was only one person out of 40-some-odd people at that meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
That asked for that. We were asking that there be a special stop, like there's going to be for Tracy's, and that neighbors be notified and have some input because of the very special nature of this property. That's basically what we were asking.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that, the request that I'm understanding today, that I didn't understand from when you spoke at planning and zoning, is that you're asking to, you don't like P3 and you don't like P4, you wanna have a special zoning for the LCRA property.
Yes, like they were initially, and that it be done in conjunction with neighborhood input and something that will allow us to live in harmony. Uh, again, I would point to the pictures on 74 and 75. I do not believe those two pictures represent like-to-like, um, uh, in any way.
And that, that was another question that I have for you, because it's the idea of, here's an example of a neighborhood of a P3, and here's an example of a P, P4. But that doesn't, as we were discussing, we could do.
Well, I know anything, I understand it's just an example.
It could be a lot of different things, it's just one particular picture.
But it's a, it's a representation of, of what the consultant was talking about, P4 possibly becoming. Now I'm hearing that P4 is not going to be able to have any residential, uh, building at all? Is that something I heard you say earlier?
No, no, ma'am, P4 is a primarily residential district.
And, and if something is commercial, it has to be in house form.
I, I realize that, I do realize that.
So to the point of, if you were looking at it, or if you were walking down the street, you would think you're walking down a residential street. There's just a, some, some of those houses may actually have a business inside it.
Is there a deadline when we would know anything about buffer zones, streets, all of that? How close they can be to our fence and that sort of thing?
They're, it, it's in the code.
It's in the current code.
Okay, can you specify to me so I can find that, because I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am, it's page 18.
18. And is that in the NIBR code?
Yes, ma'am, this, the 9/2019 version, it talks about, on page 18, it talks about what the build-to line is, what the impervious cover limits are.
Okay, those are some of, thank you, those are some of the things that we're very interested in, and I could not find, so I appreciate that very much.
Absolutely.
That's all I, that's all I have, and I appreciate very much.
Councilwoman Rejection, did you want us to visit with Ms. Rice?
Uh, I didn't want to put words in Ms. Rice's mouth. I was, I thought I heard her to say that because of the letters that are going out now, she was wondering why letters couldn't be sent out to those neighbors because of the changes. Is that what you were saying, or did I misunderstand you?
Well, no, I was, I was kind of comparing it to what you were talking about possibly doing with Tracy's, uh, that because it's been upgraded to P4, or maybe they want to stay P3, I'm not sure I understand all exactly what y'all are saying.
So, so let's clarify that. On Tracy's, it's currently has zoning that's commercial, so it's going to P4. That's a like-to-like zoning. There was a lot next to it that's currently residential, and they've made a request for that to go to P4. Because it's currently residential, what planning and zoning was recommending, if it's currently residential, it goes to P3. So if the owner of that lot wants to go from P3 to P4, that's what we would send notices about. But Tracy's itself is already commercial, they got a letter that said you're gonna be P4, none of the neighbors were contacted, and they're going to be P4, and planning and zoning is recommending that because that's a like-to-like zoning.
Okay.
Does that, does that help at all? It was a little bit confusing because the lot was right next to it.
Yeah, it was very confusing, and then they were talking about the additional notification of all the 220, or 250 feet.
So the intent is that like-for-like zoning, and we absolutely can agree to disagree, we, we have legal counsel and a property owner that believes neighborhood tourism to P4 is like-to-like zoning, and you don't have to agree with us, but that, that's where that's coming from.
And I don't.
And so, everybody else that, once they get a, a new like-for-like zoning, that's locked down. If they want to have an increased zoning, then we're talking about, we would notice the 250 feet around them, and, and planning and zoning would hear from the neighbors, but that would be because they are increasing their zoning. And we're gonna waive the fees, because we had kind of implied that we were gonna do it as a part of this process, but we think it should be separated.
I understand that. If they decide, if the developer decides on, um, the LCRA property to subdivide that property, which is, has been rumored that that would almost have to happen in order for them to recover their investment, i- is that a time at which, as these individual pockets are developed, there will be any kind of notice or any kind of, uh, indication for neighbors to be, uh, have any kind of input, or none? It's just done, and that's it?
That's correct. Subdivision is, is not, um, land used, so it doesn't fall under the property owner notification. And state law's very clear, if they meet all the regulations of the subdivision code, uh, that the city actually cannot disapprove it. So it's very much a, um, it's a process, and if they meet the regulations and ordinances that the city has adopted, the city, um, cannot disapprove it.
Well, I thank you for your time, I thank you for all of your hard work. I know that this has been a massive effort. Um, we may have some disagreements, but, um, we, I do thank you and appreciate, uh, the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rice. The, I'm sorry, I am so sorry, there's no light.
I understand where you're coming from. My, my, the one thing, the elephant in the middle of the room, I think, from my perspective, is, is it just the unknown, or is it not knowing to what extent the development can go? Or is it not knowing what kind of businesses could go in there? Um, or is it all of the above?
It's all of the above. I mean, if your property, uh, even surrounded or was several blocks away, um, I think we all know what neighborhood creep is. And, uh, if we, to my knowledge, there is no buyer, there are no plans on the table, there is nothing concrete about this, yet. And so, as we sit here, and if it's another two years and this has been zoned P4, and we have someone interested in our property, and they say, "This is fabulous, we'd love to come see your house, and we'd love to, you know, buy this," but we love it because of this, what we see behind you, and that's one of the reasons we moved there and decided to buy from Tahitian when we were burned out, because we didn't have houses all around us and development all around us. And so, if someone were to, it, that's the limbo I'm talking about, the inability to explain to anyone who has an interest in your property what is about to happen behind them, directly behind them, or two or three streets over. Uh, there's no way to tell anyone anything, except it's been designated as P4, it's been zoned commercial, uh, you will have no input into the process whatsoever, it will be whatever it decides to be. That, in my opinion, is an automatic goodbye buyer, and an automatic depreciation of the value of all of the investments that we all have made, um, for miles around that property. And I don't understand the rush to have to do this on this specific piece of property.
Let me ask another question, then, this one is geared toward Mr. Jones. At this point, if we didn't do anything to this property, this, this just happened, um, and LCRA sold it to a developer, they would still have the unknown, right? They could still do, within the use chart, whatever they wanted to with it, basically, right?
Yes, that's correct. Any, anything that is in this use chart, buy right today, they could do buy right without any notification.
So, there, I guess what I'm saying is, there's still that unknown, and I'm not quite sure how we would, how we would legislate that to get that unknown out of the picture.
I appreciate that, Dan, and I understand what you're saying. I, I may be wrong, but it's my understanding that, uh, currently, though, we do have the use and the variation, and we do have the ability to go before and see the plans and have some input into that process. Is that not correct?
No, ma'am.
Currently under.
If they, if they decided to do something that was buy right, there would be, there would be no notice, there would be no discussion, they would, it would be approved. So the limbo happened, well, the, to Councilwoman Brinnis's point, there's the unknown, a portion of the unknown has, has always been there.
Has always existed, and it's been.
And, and honestly, when somebody else owns the property, that, that's part of the unknown.
I understand. There has just been, I mean, there was a reason for that property to be brought by the person who suggested that it be bought by LCRA, and they have lived up to preserving it, uh, in a way that was extraordinarily cohesive to, uh, the neighborhood, to the historical zone, and creating a separate commercial zone that is separated from the city and the rest of the commercial zone by a giant city park, and a huge portion of your historical neighborhood that you want to protect, uh, to me is an unwise decision. But we have a disagreement.
Thank you, Ms. Rice.
That's okay.
Uh, the next person signed up to speak was, is Andrea Hashkey. If you'll please, um, come to, visit Ms. Cynthia and tell us your name and address.
My name is Andrea Hashkey. I live at 502 Buttonwood Street. It's at the intersection of Buttonwood and Wilson. I'm in accordance with everything Carol Rice has said and brought to your attention. It is a unique piece of property. Uh, when we talk, I, I think a pivotal, uh, term that we're using that has become part of the legality of this is like-to-like. I will put my opinion forward that I don't see it like-to-like because it's not an already existing infill property. We keep hearing about Tracy's, it's existed there, other businesses have existed. It is an open area, and it has remained as pretty much like Park Civic Building Government, the P5, or, uh, Parks, uh, PCS is how it has looked. Granted, it's had this tourism commercial designation on it. Listening to it, uh, as, instead of the, uh, land designation, um, on the zoning, that it's use-driven, um, and the cost of the property, like you said, it's not $4 or $5 a square foot, it's expensive property. It's unique, it's beautiful, it's expensive. This gives it, the use, the cost of the property for any investor is going to drive the use to be very dense. Nobody's gonna come in, unless they're gonna build like $800,000 homes, maybe put 10 houses in and go, "I've got my 8 million, I've made my 2 and 1/2 back, I'm good to go." They're going to want to make dense use out of it. My question is, we're talking multifamily, what do you, as council members, see when they say, "I wanna make three or four stories," or, "I wanna make a density of multifamily houses? I need more streets, I need more egress, um, creating more impermeable surfaces, uh, multifamily, multifamily, the buffering issue, when we talk about contiguous neighbors?" How much latitude do you have? And it sounds like you have very little to none. In my opinion, that changes it from being like-to-like, because I don't think the property structured in the zoning that it currently has allows us, allows for such intense use, that the potential of this property, the cost, will drive it to that. And I, I question, my opinion is questioning if that truly is like-to-like, because the demand of a developer is going to be to intensive use, and it will change the property and the area dramatically. My other contention is, we're going to have two business nodes, and it's going to not bifurcate, it's going to start to disintegrate what I have seen the city talk about, a destination, tourism, the gentleman that gave the presentation, I appreciate all the work, I understand, you know, cost, sustainability for cities, et cetera, but we are talking a historic district. And this can start disintegrating the nature of our historic district when you work from one. one node to another commercial node. And I do think you need to consider what Carol has mentioned about creep, and what that will do, because I think it was attempted to creep up Main Street, and I don't want to see that creep continue. So, I'm, I'm just, uh, want, wanted to bring that up. I don't think we need to turn our back on the property, as we now realize historically Bastrop turned its back on the river. We can't go back if we don't address this and we get honest. I know that you want to, that you've put hours and money and time and work through all of these committees and meetings, but I don't really understand why there may not be a 3.5. Can we not discuss this further? I ask that you hold this in abeyance until we really look at the ramifications of what the zoning may incur. We can't say anything, and we can't take it back. Thank you very much, I appreciate all the hard work you've done.
Thank you, Ms. Hashkey. Mayor Proton Nelson?
Let me, let me, can you hold off just a moment? I may have a question for you. Matt, if, if, if I can, somehow I came up with $2.6 million and bought that piece of property tomorrow, I could develop it as I, as I wanted to without any consideration other than meeting the state and local requirements. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So if, if the codes are adopted and I came up with the $2.6 million, again, I could develop that property any way that I saw fit, as long as I comply with all the local, state, federal requirements?
That's correct.
Okay. With that in mind, what would you suggest that we do?
Well...
From, from, from a municipal standpoint, not, not from a developer standpoint, there, there are certain...
Well, again, you're saying this is use-driven, and I think when you say that it is use-driven...
No, ma'am, not, not use-driven.
No.
Market-driven.
Okay, market-driven.
Because we're not specifying uses, and one thing, again, I would...
Okay, market-driven.
Go, go to page 18, because there were a couple of things, and again, I'm not trying to be argumentative, and we can agree to disagree, but, um, they can't do whatever impervious cover they want. There, there is an impervious cover limit, and it's 10% higher than P3, and it's lower than P5.
Alrighty.
There's also a three-story max, so it, it can't be three or four stories, there's absolutely a three-story max.
It can be three stories.
It can be three stories, but that's a max, it doesn't mean that it has to be three stories.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, if it was P5, it could be five stories, or higher in some instances. And, um, they, and it has a five to 15-foot build-to-line there. I, I don't want you to think if it's P4, it's just whatever they can come up with.
No, and I'm not.
So they, they've got restrictions that they have to do, but more importantly, for that particular piece of property, they have to take care of floodplains, they have to take care of access, so, um, as, as awesome of a piece of property as it is, it's, it's got, it, it's got some, uh, unique, some of the uniqueness about it is going to make it difficult to develop.
Built, I agree.
And, and to your point...
I agree.
It, it, um, whether it was purchased today or purchased tomorrow, most likely, Willow, we know, is underwater. That, that cannot be their major in and out.
Which goes to any developer asking that they're going to need more egress, i.e., it makes sense. Let's open Buttonwood. Now, do we get in into an impervious...
Well, they'll, it, with opening Buttonwood, that still has to be within their impervious cover, if that's how they choose to do it.
Okay, but, and then one other thing I do want to mention, I, at the meeting, I was a little surprised, Commissioner Myers, is it? Yes, had mentioned in the pattern book, they were talking about house-like structure. Well, townhouses, multifamily, I guess this means vertical. We can go three-story vertical and be looking in their backyard, and looking into my house. So we could have like house, 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 and then we can have business, 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 three-story signage. What is the signage on that? Where will people park? We need destination parking. I mean, have we really extrapolated?
And, and all of that, all of that is addressed?
Have we extrapolated this to the extreme that we know developers will push a very expensive property to, where they can own, they are limited because of floodplain and impervious materials? They are going to ask, they're going to ask for waivers, but whatever exists now, they will probably ask to the extreme. And I just want you to take that into account, that when you make a development commercial node like this, and you have a Main Street commercial node, you have a disintegration of what you consider your historic district. And I think that when you start doing that sort of intensive development, that is not like to like, that is not what the zoning exists now. So that is my contention.
Well, except that, the, putting the streets in and putting in the, um, number of residential homes, that, that can be done in neighborhood tourism. It, it could be done today if somebody bought the property.
Not three-story, not shared walls. And when you were asking about the, um, house, uh, the house structure, he, he came up to the microphone, the gentleman who has worked on this, and said, "Oh, no, that's not what it says, we've changed it." And I'm thinking, you all are voting on this, and yet, right there, you've been informed that there's a change within your pattern book. I, I think you need to step back and know what you're even voting on.
So, Mr. Jones, do you want to, I think that was when Matt said apartments wouldn't be allowed, and he misspoke, and it's in the book correctly, correct?
Say that one more time, I apologize.
I, I think what Matashki's referencing is when Mr. Lewis said, "No, P4 doesn't allow apartments, we've updated the table," but in fact, P4 does allow apartments.
Yes.
It's in the table correctly.
That's correct.
The statement that was made was misspoken. What, what is in the book is correct.
So, we can have apartments behind us?
Yes, and, and neighborhood...
Three-story apartments.
Neighborhood tourism now, um, does allow for attached and multi-home, uh, up to 35 feet.
Yes, that, that was my point. So, so if, if it stayed neighborhood tourism, they can build multifamily...
So they could do that sort of density?
They could do three-foot, yes, ma'am.
And then, so...
And in fact, they don't have the impervious cover that this new code is put in, so they act, the truth of the matter is, and I hope LCRA's not listening, they could have more, I, 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 uh, they, they could have, um, a higher impervious cover under neighborhood tourism than what they would be restricted to with P4.
Okay, so we will probably have three-story apartments behind us. I, I see, I see the cost and the drive for, um, having the, uh, land use with, uh, floodplains probably being required, so. I, I just wanted to make mention that I, I wish we could hold this in abeyance and maybe make a different designation, but apparently, um, I, that's what I'm asking for.
And the other thing I want to just make sure, because, ma'am, we just, we want to be fair to everyone, and, and sometimes that means everyone's mad at us, but that's, you know, that comes with the territory sometimes, but zoning is not dependent on how you're using the property right now. So, saying, "Well, Tracy's store is there, so it's okay if it's P4," but they had the zoning, so whether they're utilizing that zoning or not, the entitlement of that zoning is a part of the essence of that property.
So how much latitude will City Council have on the development?
It depends on what the development, if they ask for a variance from the code. And LCRA's been a good neighbor, and they are a good community partner.
I understand.
They are choosing to sell the property, they are trying to recoup their investment...
And they have the absolute right.
Any, any, uh, business that's going to be there, any developer that wants to be there, is probably not, their goal is to make 9,000 people mad. So it is very likely, as we have seen with, with other developments, they're going to come in and try to do a two-story that looks like it was built the same time the other houses were built on Wilson Street. People are generally wanting to be successful and wanting to be good neighbors. That being said, that's why within this P4, we're real clear about it can't be more than three stories. It, the impervious cover is not only streets, but it's also the square footage of the building that you have to have, if you're, if, to your point, if you're putting in additional streets, you have to have street trees, you have to have sidewalks, you, there, there are a lot of things included in the code. I don't want you to think that we're just giving them a blank check, I guess is my, is my point.
Right, well, and, and I understand being good neighbor, but we've all sold property, and when we make our money and we sign the check off at closing, we're like, "I hope you do well, and I hope you do well by the neighbors," but then we move on. And, you know, yes, best wishes, but then we live with the realities, so, yeah.
You know, if, if, even if we did hold it in abeyance, what, I'm trying to ascertain, what would it accomplish for us? Would you still have the developer come in and do it right now, if we held it in abeyance, or if we moved forward, they, they could do it? And we're hoping that whoever develops that appreciates the community, and wants to have neighborhood harmony in some way, shape, or form, and not put some monstrosity up, and hopefully through development of, of appropriate codes, that we can convey that to any developer coming in, that, that neighborhood harmony is a part of our community. That's authentic Bastrop, as y'all pointed out in y'all's presentations tonight, so...
Yes. Okay, well, thank you, because really, I did need clarification. It just seemed like, like I said, let's extrapolate to the extreme, because developers have a propensity to that, and it's expensive property, we need return, and that's, that's a drive, that's a marketplace drive.
Yes, ma'am, I, I understand that. We, we just have to be respectful of everybody's property rights as well.
Yes. Okay, thank you so much for your work, and I do believe in, uh, this plan and, um, the new zoning. I think it's wonderful. I'm, I just find that this piece of property is uniquely specific in its needs.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, Matashki. Chairman, Chairwoman, sorry, Chairwoman Debbie Moore.
Chair, it will be fine. I live around the corner from the LCRA property, um, so I have a vested interest in what happens. But in looking at all of this, the fact of the matter is, whether it's like to like or not, LCRA wants P4. And in this land of property rights, how can we tell them they can't have the zoning that is the closest to what they have now? The sign that's on that, that property has had commercial on it since the day it went up, so it's not like it's been a secret. Um, I'm concerned, but I do believe that it would be irresponsible for this body to not give a property owner the zoning they want, when legal is telling us it would be a taking and it's illegal. Lots of other good arguments, pro and con, but that's the, the bottom line, the property owners want P4, legal is telling us if we do anything else, it's illegal, and I can't vote to do something that I know is illegal and put this city in jeopardy.
I, I would just, because there's a, there's a lot of fixation, I know it's taken all of us some time to wrap our head around not being use-driven, and so to make a use-driven comparison, if we were to delay this for a couple of months, which is about what it would take to put in a three and a half, if you will, the three and a half would still have to have everything in the buy-right category and everything in the CUP category as part of that three and a half, which is actually, if I recall, Matt, more expansive than what the P4 is going to be. So P4 is the closest match, but it's actually a little less on what you can do with it than what's in existence now, so it's not opening it up to things that it's all not already able to do. So, um, even, even a special category for it would still have to include all of these, and wouldn't change, it wouldn't change anything, would, it would have to be the same either way. So, so holding it in abeyance or trying to figure out a special zoning or overlay or something like that's not going to change anything, because you still have to have the stuff that's in the buy-right and the CUP category as a part of that, which is already in existence in the P4, minus a couple of them, which, you know...
Okay, what I was asking the city managers, what else do we have to cover tonight?
I'll make a last comment.
Absolutely, Pablo.
I think it's kind of an important one, uh, because it's, we've actually spent the time to develop a pattern book that gives you more options than just probably the one picture you saw posted. And, and this is something that the develop, any, any new project, I have to go through a DRC, Development Review Committee. I mean, we, we're, we're actually putting it out there, we're telling, um, we want the best product, that's what we're doing with our, with the B3 code, and we're giving them examples of what that should look like, and I think that's important, because we didn't have that before, and, and if you look through the pattern book, you can go right to those house types, they're residential in form, they have streets, they look like they belong in a neighborhood, and I think we have in our mind that it's going to be a, a really blight, you know, high-density, but we're not trying to do that. We really are trying to tell the development community, "We want your best product, and this is what we're looking for." Matt, when they're going to develop a, a property, are we going to be kind of looking for something like this? How does that, can you talk about that?
Yeah, so if they came to do something like that, uh, the pattern book is, is, you know, a part of this code, although it's not regulatory, some elements within their materials and otherwise would be with the, the Iredale District, but it serves as a guide, uh, for development within the city, and, and it's certainly an important document and part of the codes.
Thank you, Pablo. We hadn't talked about the pattern book, and that's a, that's a good point to bring up. So, Council, if, um, Chairwoman can talk to her commission as well, but the, uh, the manual, the technical manual, the pattern book, is this thing that we're talking about, the thoroughfare master plan, those, I believe that your recommendation to us was that all of those be approved as they were submitted, is, and that's how you got, so, um, Council, do you have any, we're not voting on anything tonight, but the point of this was to be a workshop. Do you have any questions for planning and zoning while we're here with them? Any questions about what they're recommending, or anything you wish to discuss? Councilmember Rogers?
Questions on the book in general, or just a question for them?
Any questions you want.
Are you sure? Got a lot of stickies. You asked for it.
So if, if y'all want to go through the, the stickies, that's fine, or if you want us to arrange some individual, um, time to get those comments, and we can clean the book up, we're happy to do that, because I don't think the point of tonight is to go through the book. So if you've got stickies, we are happy to take those, and it's quite possible that a lot of that's already been fixed.
Okay, I'll just set up a time to come and fix it.
Yes, ma'am.
There was one thing about, in your sign ordinance, that you reference poll signs, but then I couldn't find it referenced anywhere else in the book. It tells you...
Do you have a specific page number you can send this to?
Let me find a sticky. Um, I was just... Well, it, it tells you that poll, when you list all those, where the signs can go, it tells you polls can be referenced in a certain area, but then I couldn't find you writing that.
Polls are only allowed in the 71 district.
But it's not written, I can't see, I can't find it written in here anywhere. That's what I was trying to tell you. It says it's going to be referenced somewhere, I just couldn't find the reference. That's what I was just trying to make sure, you tell it's going to be referenced, and then I couldn't find the reference. And the only other suggestion I had besides my little sticky is during your mobile trailer code, you put in the, the fee, of how much the fee is for mobile, mobile food trailer permit?
Um, that will come out. Uh, the mobile food was a separate insert, uh, because it was zoning, and it was included, but all fees will be sent to the Code of Ordinances Appendix Act.
That's what I was going to ask. Since all the rest of them are removed, that way it's all referenced at the same spot. Okay, then I'll leave, leave you for another meeting on my hundred... Sticky.
Councilmember Ennis?
I have one, one quick question, then I'll do the same thing as, uh, Councilwoman Rogers. On page 93, devol, (cough) development patterns permitted for character districts, um, I'm sure it says it somewhere else, but why did we leave some of the character districts out? Is it because they're already built out, or what? We don't have Bastrop State Park, Old Town, uh, River District, or TDD in there.
Yeah, the, he, he's saying the chart got cut off, so we will shrink it till it off that's on there. They're there.
Great, thank you, ma'am.
On my page 93, I have something doesn't match with page 15, and you've made me want to look.
Yeah, so it comes, it turns into, and Matt Jones and Lewis are probably both going to slap me, and maybe I need to go to special tutoring, but on page 15, we have the percentages for the P3, 4, and 5, but then on page 93, it has different percentages, and then in the pedestrian shed, it goes, so I just, we need to clarify that, because that can get us into thinking, well, you're not allowed to have P3, or you can have P3, but when I was looking at the percentage mix on page 15, and then reading the verbiage on page 93, there seems to be a disconnect.
So on page 93, it deals with a village cluster district, so that's the type of development.
So how, then, on page 15, what are those percentages dealing with?
It's traditional neighborhood.
Okay, you can't tell that by looking at that chart. And then, are those guidelines, or are those anything from that is a variance and now you got to do a regulating plan?
When you say that.
The P3, P4, P5 mix and a traditional neighborhood, page 15. And is, and are you held to those percentages when you're more than 30 and less than 80 acres?
So that is a place type allocation per pedestrian shed, and what will drive the pedestrian shed is whether it is a green field, green space, or infill. So if it's a green space and they are designing the entire master plan development, those are guidelines on how it works out. If you are currently zoned something, we couldn't prevent you from doing that because of the zoning. So you have to take the pedestrian shed in context, because it's certainly easier to achieve these mixes when it's greenfield to be developed versus it's downtown and we have to make what we've got work based on the zoning.
And my suggestion is, since we're on page 15 and we're like, it's one of the very first charts, we really haven't defined that infill and greenfield, and maybe the percentages need to be in the, not on the top part of that chart.
So if you go to the section where it debates pedestrian shed, that's covered. And all of this in the front is nothing more than an introduction.
Just pulling it, okay.
So if you want more information on the pedestrian shed, then you have to go to the section and read the entire section on pedestrian shed to understand it.
Okay, well, you might consider adding a sentence, because I think it can, right off the bat, start confusing things. Because when you go over to the pedestrian shed, it says it's more than 30 acres and less than 80 acres, and it zones all that in, but for folks that are like, "Okay, somebody zoned P4 next to me, what does it mean?" And you start looking at these different percentages, you can be in a rabbit hole before you know it. Just a thought.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes, and I've looked at several of these versions, and I would like to request that the Chair of P&amp;Z be recognized as the Chair of P&amp;Z, all of the rest of us have our titles.
Yes.
I think that's on page two.
I have two more questions that weren't really a sticky on the title.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, because I know that you guys are venting this, you know I like the sign ordinance, yep. I really, on several sections, whether it's a band sign, or a... I just, I don't like us telling people what they can and cannot put on their sign. Several of them, whether it's a band sign, or it's telling them that they have, they can only use their name, they can only use their slogan, they can only use this, but I mean, I think it's point, I think a business should be able to put what they want on their sign. They're paying for the sign ordinance, they're paying for their sign. I think that might be a little bit kind of picky, and kind of being too governess, if we're just going to tell them, "They want to put shirts, 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 that's fine, it's their sign." But I'd rather you put something that it can't be, you know, has to be appropriate, but not tell them exactly what they have to put on their own sign, it's just being a little bit restrictive. Because some of them say, some of your little guidance say they have to put these things and some don't, depending on whether it's a blade sign or this sign. I'm just saying, I think that's being a little bit governing, that we probably don't need to govern. Surely your code enforcement has enough without going around telling people how to address those signs. And the other question I had, on your monument signs, I thought, I think there might be, there are several parts of 70, I mean, 95 Chestnut, that the property is way down on one side and way up on one side, and it can only be so many feet high. I think we need a line saying it can only be 35 feet from street level or property level. I mean, I just want a little bit of clarification, just because some are, you know, somewhere in the valley.
So I just want to remind council that these are rules that staff can follow and say yes, and if they want anything other than this, there's a process to get approval. And we had this conversation before about 71 and 95, and I thought council took a consensus about it was going to be on 71, it wasn't going to be on 95, and if anybody wanted it to be different on 95, it would be done on a case-by-case basis before you. Am I remembering that?
Let me take a different shot at it, Councilmember Rogers. I think what she's really saying is, staff doesn't want to have to determine what's appropriate. So they're, they have listed the basics, and then if somebody wants to deviate from that much, they want them to just come ask somebody so that staff doesn't get into a...
That's a policy. Staff does not do policy.
Yeah.
Y'all have given us the rules, and we're happy to interpret the rules, but when there's deviation from that, that's a policy conversation, and there are, there's a protocol for that.
Okay, so if I'm building a monument sign, where does a 35 feet start?
At the ground?
At which ground? At my property level, or the one that's right there at the street level? That's what I'm asking, is for it to be written, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, think about her parking lot, it's, she loses 10 feet in front of her store.
Right, that's all I'm asking is for that designation to stay, your 35 feet will be from your...
It would be from the grade where the sign is located.
That's all I'm asking, is for you to enclose that sign, I mean, that statement, that's all I'm asking you to do, is so when people read this, they know what you're wanting. I'm not asking you to change it, I'm just asking you to be clear, so people know how to measure it. That's all I'm asking.
That makes sense.
So it says maximum total height is measured from the finished grade at the center of the sign.
Okay. Okay.
Is that clear? Is that, okay.
All right, and did we, are you okay on the address stuff, or would you really? No, you're not okay, I can tell you're not okay. And is that really what we're trying to, just be clear about what staff can sign off on?
Well, you get into a lot of ambiguity, because if it's anything other than the sign, then, grade, grade is a real problem, depending on where you are in town. So the easiest way to be consistent to everybody is you measure from the installation of the sign. Wherever the sign is, is the ground. So if you're measuring in the city center of that sign, wherever it is, it's 35 feet.
Okay.
So if they can carve out in that side of the hill and safely put that monument and meet our standards, then you could benefit from the extra five or 10 feet, but that wouldn't be a call of the staff, that would be a product of meeting the code on your property and putting the sign in.
I just didn't see that part, that's all. Thank you for having it in there.
All right. Anybody, may I approach him, Nelson?
Well, you know, the work that the P&amp;Z did, the work that the P&amp;Z did Thursday night was exemplary, and I was just wondering, since then, has, P&amp;Z, do y'all have questions for us, or something that you want us to talk about that has come up since Thursday
I will continue to read this book, because I don't have everything memorized. Some of the terms are still confusing, but I am comfortable enough with the book as presented, and knowing that it will be amended from time to time, will be cleaned out from time to time. Matt and I have already talked about changing some musts and shalls to be, will be encouraged and things like that. So when things like that come up, I'll probably be dropping the next director, or the mayor, or the city manager, a little note, saying what does this mean and what does that mean. But I have the utmost respect for the members of this commission, and they were ready to roll, they had, look at Pablo's charts, and look at all his little sticky. I know he's probably memorized half, three quarters of it, and Dr. Lasson has had experience, this guy here is a Realtor, and these folks were comfortable enough with it, even with my questions about some specifics, that the overreaching goal had been met, and that we were recommending a product that will be good for the city. So does anybody have anything they want to specifically ask, or any questions that have come up that we need to discuss tonight?
I just wanted to say that, you know, we've kind of enjoyed the process. If the council wanted to slow down and give us more stuff to work on, I know we've got our time scheduled, we'd be happy to do whatever the council seems is necessary, but specifically when it comes to the pattern book and the transportation network, I know the pattern book is more suggestive rather than enforceable, and I'm not exactly sure if, I know we've seen a couple of recent subdivisions within the city that didn't necessarily hold true to the transportation network, the grid. I would really like to see as much bite put into those two things as possible, because I think those are wonderful items that will preserve our integrity and decrease our traffic flow on specific collecting streets, and just to get those as much teeth as possible.
I want to acknowledge your comment, the beauty of council adopted the thoroughfare plan by ordinance, it becomes non-negotiable, and anybody that doesn't want to follow it, it will require to be amended before any development can actually move forward. So it's got about as much teeth in it as you can have, and that was one of the reasons that council was pretty clear about the gridded network, because without that, you don't have the 330 by 330 block that is really cornerstone to this. So they will be adopting that actually first. And just by way of a little background, House Bill 3167, which is the shot clock that required all of us to have to adopt everything by ordinance, we're actually going back and adopting the comprehensive plan by ordinance, because at the time, it was appropriate to adopt it by resolution. So the comprehensive plan will be adopted by ordinance, the thoroughfare plan will be adopted by ordinance, they are amending Chapter 5. And so if anything is approved that is not in compliance with the comp plan or the thoroughfare plan, they will actually have to amend it, and that will require it coming back to P&amp;Z, because you will be recommending that. So that was one of the reasons that we started this process requiring that, because y'all have been very clear, y'all being P&amp;Z and the council on the community wishes, so it should not be an easy process to change. So it will require a lot of notice and a lot of public comment, so if it does get changed, it will be because everybody is in agreement, that needs to happen.
Pablo?
I have one more input, especially on the Iredale District. In addition to the materials, the composition, the makeup that we're looking for in the development, it's helpful sometimes to get a vertical and a horizontal articulation understanding of the proposed development. I've had to provide those at certain, that just eliminates the big box. You can have a solid brick front and it's a box for 100 feet, some of the vertical and horizontal articulation could help direct the design people to understand what we really want from them.
They're talking in the back row, Pablo.
Yeah, they're talking in the back row. I think it's certainly something you could look at doing, I think it, depending on the place type, for example, like a P5, like Main Street, for example, you're not going to have a lot of horizontal articulation, because it's one front. You'll have fenestration, awnings, canopies, galleries, things like that, but your build-to line is pretty, can be set. So, but again, that's kind of a decision policy, if you want to put that...
So you feel pretty good?
Matt Lewis would be the more expert one to talk to that. Do you have any thoughts on that, Matt? You haven't got to talk yet?
Oh, no.
It's short.
There we go.
Good evening, council, commission, Matt Lewis, Simple City Design. And you bring up a very great point, Commissioner. One of the things that we've tried to do through each of the place types was ensure that each building type had a front porch, or some way that it's addressing the street. Furthermore, each building has to have a certain percent of glazing or glass at the ground level. The other thing to ensure that the buildings respect the street that they're facing, is that the building must take a certain percentage of the lot. And so, for example, on your downtown Main Street, the buildings are contiguous and they take up 100% of the lot face, to ensure that continuity when walking down the street. Those elements are included in here, so that the built form actually emulates those patterns which were extracted from the DNA of the town, to help with the massing. You bring up a very solid point, and so in order to accomplish what you're striving to accomplish, all of those elements as a collective, under the standards that are from the encroachment depth of where, how far they are close they need to be to the sidewalks, the street trees, those elements are contained to accomplish what you're striving to accomplish when you put them in as a collective.
So it's my understanding that it's already accomplished with what we put forward, and it's just a matter of the design team understanding that desire from, and putting that out as far as for review during the development process?
Yes, sir.
For example, in the P5, the building frontage is 80% minimum. You know, when you get to a P4, it's 60%, 40% in P3, so there's those requirements that are built into each place type, to try to approve, or try to have within the code itself, those guidelines, what you're trying to do with the vertical and horizontal articulation. It was meant to be built into the code for the massing.
That's also on page 18, if you guys are looking for it.
My concern was that that 80% could be a solid front, that was all.
But there's also requirements for porches and other things, and galleries and arcades, but...
Well, if you feel good about it, Matt, and I feel good about it.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Jackson?
I had a question about, and Councilmember Rogers brought up about the monument signs, and I know I talked several times in the past about the monument signs, and I was trying to see some clarity from going through the book. I thought that some of them are, I guess, existing, and I don't know if they were in violation or what, but I know we talked about the sizes and things like that, and I thought maybe it was because I was driving my smart car. Well, I moved my smart car to a larger car today, and I still have obstruction at certain levels with the monument signs that are in existence in several places. And I'm wondering if that's going to be addressed, or is it addressed and I just missed it? Because we've got, and they're on Chestnut, monument signs that are protruding into the sightlines, and I think they're a safety hazard, and they are, not that I want to have to have them moved, but they are dangerous at intersections.
Yeah, so at an intersection, they would not be allowed to locate within a sight triangle, which is, I believe it's 25 foot back from the intersection. I can't speak to the existing ones, if they predate our regulations, for example, then they, again, could continue to be in use, but as it's written today, they could not be inside the sight triangle.
So in other words, those that are in existence, even if they are causing a hazard, a safety hazard, they will continue to be able to exist, or until someone gets hit, you know, run over, or whatever, because of obstruction?
The not performing signs section today, they're allowed to exist unless they're damaged, I believe more than 60%.
Or unless someone else is damaged because of the obstruction.
Do you have any other topic?
No.
Okay, so I had two things. There's a review in here, but, and I think it'd be a good idea, we think about what time of, most of it, like, should we, do we want to be reviewing it before we do a budget? Is there a time that, well, good Lord, please don't do it around the budget, but we ought to sort of have a home in on when we thought we might review it?
I don't know that it'll be listed in the code, but it'll be in the ordinance that you adopt.
Okay.
And the goal is, is that P&amp;Z at their... And, um, the goal is, is that P&amp;Z at their May meeting, uh, make, uh, formal recommendations. In June, we will host a joint meeting at the conclusion of the election process, um, and that they would share it at that time. And then y'all could give me some direction before I build the budget. So, if it's a small area plan or it requires hiring a consultant to do something, we don't have to wait a whole year for that to happen.
I, I just think that planning and zoning commissioners oughta have a feel too so they can plan their schedule of when, when are we-
And we have an annual review of the comp plan also.
Yeah.
We probably oughta schedule that.
So, you may wanna, you know, do you wanna do them together or do you wanna stagger them? I just thought that was something that we oughta think about. And then, um, not only do I think we should call out Debbie as being the chairwoman of the commission, I would like council to consider, uh, both Richard Gartman and Patrick Connell will not be on planning and zoning in October when this plan is adopted. And I would like to give them credit as, as having been a major part of the plan. Likewise, I would like to make a mention of councilmember Jones who spent a ton of time with you guys and was your liaison. And this is, this is a big document and I, I understand that, you know, the day that we vote on it, it'll have the people that are in there, but, um, if you guys are agreeable to it, I would like to give those three folks, um, the, the, just, just rewards for all of the hard work that they've put in.
Well, I think that's more than fair.
Hearts are full. Everyone's happy? Any, well, I don't know if everyone's happy. Any other comments that we need to go over? All right, councilmember Peterson, it's 8:45.
Great workshop. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn and city council's adjourned at 8:45.
P&amp;G, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
It's a race.
(inaudible).
Thank you guys so very, very much. Really appreciate it.